Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What a beautiful sight. The room is full. At this time, I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August the 8th, beginning at 7:11 PM. I want to thank everybody for being out here with us today. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Please join Melody Fowler in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruption to those around you. And now, if you would please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we will consider administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, Area Superintendent, Principal for Gunn Junior High, Principal for Amos Elementary, Principal for Corey Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, Principal for Ditto Elementary, Principal for Johns Elementary, Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School, Assistant Principal for Seguin, Assistant Principal for Peach Elementary, Assistant Principal for Thornton, Assistant Principal for Webb, and Assistant Principal for West.
Just letting you all soak that in. So, do we have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as discussed in executive session? Mr. Chappa?
I move that we approve the administrative appointments discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Chappa, a second by Dr. Reich. Any discussion? Stand on, please vote. All passed in the affirmative. It's unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to start with the introductions. And so, first, we'll introduce, and again, this is a ratification, so these individuals have been already transitioned to their position. But I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, Dr. A. Tracy Brown. (Applause). Dr. Brown attended Texas Women's University for Bachelor of Science in Mass Communications, A&amp;M Commerce for Master of Science in Ed Administration, and Southern Methodist University for Doctorate in Educational Policy and Leadership. Most recently, she was our Senior Area Superintendent, has been an Area Superintendent, has been an Executive Director of School Leadership, a Principal, a Leadership Program Director with SMU, has been a Dean of Instruction, Assistant Principal, and a Reading Language Arts Teacher. Tracy, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Mays, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Cavassos. I thank you for this amazing opportunity to continue leading in Arlington ISD as the Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership. Just four short years ago, I stood before you. I was bright-eyed and full of hope, and uncertain about my path here in Arlington. And I can say to you today that I am now a full-fledged member of the Arlington community. I certainly feel right at home. In Arlington, I've been given a platform to lead, in a different capacity, to grow, to stretch, and of course, to innovate. I want to personally thank you, Dr. Cavassos and Dr. Wertz, for your vision and for your confidence, my amazing department, who many of them are here tonight. I appreciate you. We have so many awesome campus leaders and lots of my close friends and family who are here today and watching live. I appreciate you. And I also want to honor the absent, my parents and my brother Butch. I continue to push because they are still with me even today. Our work is so very important here in Arlington. As an eighth grader, I vividly recall sitting in the classroom, daydreaming about what my life would be like. And although I did not know that my life would bring me here to Arlington, I do know and fervently believe that everything that you will ever be is inside of you right now. As an eighth grader, it was already inside of me. I had a trajectory. I simply needed others to help guide me along my path. That is keenly our job as educators here in Arlington, to really help others understand their innate capabilities, their inner strength, and realize their fullest potential, what's already inside of them. Mrs. Elektra Kitchen did that for me. Mrs. Kitchen, are you here? Wave your hand. So, many of you know Mrs. Kitchen.[348.12][348.12](Applause). She is a recent AISD retiree, much to my chagrin. I wanted to keep her here longer. But I met her over thirty-something years ago, when I was in the eighth grade, and she was my junior high history teacher. I reconnected with her after I lost contact for a couple of decades when I came to Arlington four years ago. So, Ms. Kitchen did for me what we do for our students. She inspired me to be greater, to dream bigger, and to work harder, and for that, I'm grateful. I'd like to close with one of my favorite leadership quotes by Harvey Firestone. "The growth and development of people is the highest calling of leadership." That is my purpose. It is my passion, and I'm so thankful to continue to be able to lead others in Arlington and help change outcomes for the students we serve. Thank you so much.[400.02][400.02](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce our new Area Superintendent, Dr. Lena McDonald. Dr. McDonald attended Cameron University for Bachelor of Science in Physical Ed and Psychology, Wayland Baptist University for Master of Education, A&amp;M Commerce for her Doctorate in Educational Administration. Most recently, served as the Assistant Chief and Academic Support Services in Irving ISD, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, and has been a Division Director. Has also been an Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services in Castleberry, an Associate Director, an Executive Director, a Principal, an Assistant Principal, a Health and Psychology Teacher, and has been a Head Women's Basketball Coach and an Assistant Basketball Coach. Lena, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so much. President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for the opportunity. That lengthy resume tells you that I'm old.[463.12][463.12](Laughter). So, today is my birthday, and I decided to celebrate it here in Arlington ISD.[468.77][468.77](Applause). Thank you for the opportunity to become a leader with this great district. I was drawn to Arlington because of the aspirations that we have for students to excel every day inside of our classrooms, but I was also drawn, as I told the committee, to the fact that we believe in growth for teachers and leaders within the district. And that's exciting, that we truly do put efforts into encouraging people to be lifelong learners. I was a coach, a former coach, and I will always be a coach, but what I learned about leadership is leadership is not easy. But in leadership, you have to be kind, you have to be persistent, but you also have to be humble, and you have to have a sense of humor. And leaders also have to be willing to roll their sleeves up and work hard. My commitment to you in Arlington ISD is that I will work hard, and I will work elbow-to-elbow, and I am very humbled to be here as a leader in this district. Similar to Dr. Brown, and thank you, Dr. Brown, for this opportunity. I know my mom is in heaven screaming "Happy Birthday" and saying "You go, girl." Thank you.[540.16][540.16](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Gunn Junior High, Dr. Matt Varnell. Dr. Varnell attended the University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Music, UT Arlington for Bachelor's, I'm sorry, for Master of Education in Ed Leadership, and University of Texas at Arlington for Doctorate in Education and Leadership and Policy Studies. Dr. Varnell, most recently, was the Principal of Corey Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. He's been the Principal of Sheridan Elementary, has been an Assistant Principal at West, has been a Director of Bands, an Assistant Director of Bands, and an Assistant Director of Band in Grand Prairie as well. Dr. Varnell, congratulations.
Thank you very much. President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board, it's an honor to be standing with you again. I stand here as a proud AISD student. I began my career at Pope Elementary, Shackelford, and Lamar, and have worked in a lot of schools as a college student and as a full-time adult. It is a great district, and I'm honored to continue my service. I would first like to say thank you to all of the people that are involved in the Corey community for a wonderful experience. It is truly a partnership between home and school, and it's a wonderful place that I leave. I don't leave the people because fortunately, I get to see them again when they come to Gunn in a few years. It's a great honor and privilege to go to a school that's already performing very well, and I look forward to taking them from their place they are today to a new adventure that we have to write together as a new story. I congratulate you for having the vision to see these multiple pathways. One of the things that makes me really proud about this district is we don't ask the question, "How smart are you?", we ask the question, "How are you smart?" There are many ways for kids to succeed, and you, as a Board, have set that vision. I have a wonderful supportive family. I thank my parents deeply for instilling values in me that have really guided me to become a leader, and hopefully, I will continue to earn their trust and their respect, because ultimately, that's what I'm trying to do, is make my parents proud. I thank my wife for being here this evening. She's a teacher at Jones. I asked my son, "Hey, do you want to come?", and he's like, "No, I'm good. I'm good."[686.87][686.87](Laughter). So, he's a sophomore, and that sounds about right, so. I appreciate very much the opportunity. I look forward to a new journey at Gunn. Thank you very much for your confidence.[700.12][700.12](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Principal of Amos Elementary, Ms. Karen Tufts.[708.18][708.18](Applause). Karen attended University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies, most recently was the Assistant Principal at Miller Elementary, has been a math academic specialist, a sixth and seventh grade math teacher, a fifth grade math teacher in Irving, and has taught fifth grade in math and science in Colleen as well. Karen, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you and trusting me with the leadership of Amos Elementary. There are many people that deserve credit to the leader that I have developed into. Dr. Wertz, for his constant push to make me a better teacher. I did not always appreciate it in the moment, but you were a large part of my driving force. Katuska Eredor, thank you for the constant praise and encouragement and mentoring me through my educational leadership program. Debbie Williams, thank you for trusting me and taking a chance on me as an Assistant Principal. Shelley Austin, thank you for being my soundboard, constant words of encouragement. Dr. McDonald, I am ecstatic to learn underneath your leadership. Thank you for the support you've already shown me. Dr. Buell, and thank you for the four years of growth you've helped me growing into the leader. To my Miller family, thank you for letting me practice, learn, and grow as a leader with you all. You were always there with words of encouragement or to point out my mistakes, which we will call opportunities of growth, and they were. We grew as a school, we grew as a family, and we grew as Mavericks. I will miss my Maverick family, but I'm excited about the new journey I will begin with my equal family. All these amazing people have helped me become the leader I am, but some very important people helped mold me into the person behind the leader. Mom and Dad, thank you for always believing me, encouraging me. Blake Tufts, you are my rock, support system, soundboard, and my partner through crime. I evidently convinced you how impactful this teaching profession is as you joined the profession too, following in your parents' footsteps. Donna and Roger Tufts, thank you for encouraging words and help to support to make an educational family work, because we know that's hard when everybody's in education. And to my children, Raimi and Bowen, you inspire me every day. I hope when I send you to school, your teachers and principals love you as much as I have loved my Miller students and will love my Amos students. Thank you.[843.12][843.12](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Corey Fine Arts and Dual Language, Ms. Nidia Zarvar.[855.82][855.82](Applause). Nidia attended Universidad Internacional de las Americas, Ambassador of Science in Business Administration, TCU for Master of Ed in Elementary Education. Most recently, the Principal of Atherton Elementary, has been an Assistant Principal at Rankin, and has been a third-grade bilingual teacher at Berry. Nidia, congratulations.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as the new Principal of Corey Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language. This begins my 24th year in Arlington ISD, and I want to thank you for investing in my growth and development as I served as a bilingual teacher, an Assistant Principal, and a Principal. I have been supported by amazing people throughout this journey, and I would like to thank Dr. Brown and Dr. Jarco for their guidance and support as my most recent Area Superintendent. And I look forward to working with Dr. Buell and with the rest of the leaders in Area One. I would like to thank my family for their unconditional support, my husband Sean, for being a constant in my life, and his patience, and loving help. And I am so sorry, but I seem to be driving further from home with each new assignment.[936.43][936.43](Laughter). But I don't know how that happened. I'm so sorry. Now, I also would like to thank the leadership team, staff, students, and parents of Atherton Elementary for these amazing four years. We have made tremendous gains during these years due to the commitment, hard work, and dedication of all involved. I believe that Atherton will continue to excel and make a positive impact in students' lives. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and always remember that I love you to the moon and back. And I'm gonna cry. Oh, my God.[970.43][970.43](Laughter). Okay. I look forward to working at Corey Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language and to continue the vision that Dr. Varnell started. I'm honored to serve the staff, students, parents, and community at Corey. Please know that I will be committed to building relationships, empowering teachers, promoting student success, and will serve Corey to the best of my ability. Thank you.[997.62][997.62](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Principal for Ditto Elementary, Ms. Belle Williams.[1008.62][1008.62](Applause). Belle attended Louisiana State University for Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education, Texas Christian University for Master of Education in Ed Administration, most recently a Principal at Kennedale Junior High School, has been an Associate Principal in Kennedale, has been an Assistant Principal in White Settlement, English Teacher in Mansfield, and then an English Teacher in Louisiana as well. Belle, congratulations.
Thank you. Now you can see why I already love Arlington ISD so much. President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, I first want to say thank you for providing me with the opportunity to serve the students, staff members, and parents, and the community members of Ditto Elementary School. Also want to extend a very special thank you to Dr. Christy Buell for believing in me, supporting me, and always offering encouraging words through this transition. I am both honored and excited to become a part of the school community that is built on such strong historical traditions, values, and excellence. It is a privilege to be a part of the Arlington ISD leadership team, and I look forward to growing and continuing my educational journey. In just these few short weeks that I have joined the leadership team, Arlington ISD already feels like home to me. I am passionate about the work that we do as educators and the positive impact we can forever have on children. I am committed to ensuring that every student that enters our school at Ditto will leave knowing that they are truly loved. I look forward to continuing my journey and fulfilling my purpose as a servant leader to the children and staff at Ditto Elementary School. At this time, I'd also like to recognize my family, friends, and staff members who took the time to be here to show their support. My husband Paul, who is over here.[1127.91][1127.91](Laughter). He is, he's like way. He is also the head basketball coach, and he's a teacher at Arlington High School. And then, our four boys, Jalen, Jordan, Micah, and Clark, but only one is here tonight. And so, Micah, who also plays for the Arlington Colts Football Team and Basketball Team as well, and he'll be a sophomore this year. And our other boys, my youngest Clark is actually back home in Louisiana, got parents, and our two older boys are traveling right now. So, my family, my other family members that are here, my mom, who's here, I couldn't be where I am today if it weren't for all the sacrifices that my mom has made for my sisters and I. And I'll leave it there before I start crying, so. My sister, Dr. Carla Lige, actually, we're all educators, and so, we are, we truly value education, and also, finest, thank you for being here to support me. My Ditto tribe, who are already like family to me and very dear to my heart, we've been able to spend a lot of time working together. We had our campus PD today and had lots of fun. I look forward to an amazing school year, working together with you and growing along with you guys on this journey. To my PTA parents, there's so many people, I can't see, but I know Iva, our PTA president, is here.[1212.74][1212.74](Laughter). She's right behind me, actually. And so, thank you guys so much for being here. Our parents are awesome. I promise we have the most amazing parents and the most amazing support network at Ditto. And to all of my other friends and staff members that are here, my Area One Principals who have welcomed me and have supported me and mentored me and are so, so much fun. I really appreciate everyone's support. And once again, I want to say thank you for this wonderful opportunity, and let's go Ditto Rangers.[1244.21][1244.21](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Principal for Johns Elementary, Dawn Stroyeski.[1258.01][1258.01](Applause). Dawn attended Damon College for Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently was the Assistant Principal at Seguin High School, has been an Assistant Principal at Williams Elementary, Instructional Coach at Short Elementary, a fourth grade teacher at Anderson, and has also taught third and fourth grade in Fort Worth. Dawn, congratulations.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to serve Johns Elementary. I'm beyond excited to start my new journey and go back into the elementary world. I tried high school for a little bit, and now I'm going back.[1298.58][1298.58](Laughter). I loved high school, though. I'm only able to be here because other people believed in me. Ms. Beth Hollinger, she really believes in me. She encourages me to grow as a leader, and she encourages just me to be me, and I really appreciate that. Seguin Nation, Mr. Ray Borden, Kirsten Lundin, they really helped me, and they grew me a lot in my short time at Seguin, and I'm forever thankful to them. They taught me that excellent, what it means to have excellence as a standard. Let's see, I'm so nervous. I also want to thank the staff at Johns. We've been working together for three weeks, and it's amazing. I already feel like, you've already heard, I already feel like I'm home. I feel like I've found some soulmates who have the same passions and commitment to the work that I have, and the work that we started there is already bringing happiness to my heart. I do have some people to introduce today. My husband Keith, he's supported me for 28 years, and so, he deserves some credit.[1362.83][1362.83](Laughter). My daughter Madison, she's an Arlington High Colt. She is a swimmer at Arlington High. She's going into her junior year. This will be the first year she's driving herself to school. My son Maddox, he is a Bailey Ram, so we're all about, you know, AISD. When we moved to Texas long ago, it's really hard to move across the country, and when we had children, my mother-in-law and father-in-law, they moved here to help us. So, they've been helping us all along the way because educators work a lot of hours. And then, we have, we call them our Texas family because they're friends who become family. They're all here today to support me, and I really appreciate them being here for me. Several years ago, I went into a classroom to pick up a student for wordwork. He was being pulled out for wordwork, and I said, "Are you ready to go do your wordwork today?". And as if wordwork was his life's mission, he said, "I was born ready." And I was like, "All right."[1421.92][1421.92](Laughter). I'm happy to hear that, but I just want you to know that I intend to go into this position at Johns and with that same type of excitement. Like, I feel like I was born ready, and I'm really thankful for the opportunity. Thank you.[1434.51][1434.51](Applause).
Next, introduce the new Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School, Mr. Cedric Boyd.[1445.24][1445.24](Applause). Cedric attended Grambling State University for Bachelor of Arts in Mass Communications and Public Relations, Texas Southern University for Master of Public Administration, Public Policy, most recently an Assistant Principal at Webb Elementary, has been an eighth-grade teacher, a science teacher department leader, and has taught fourth grade math and science, and has been a site coordinator as well. Cedric, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the Board. Also would like to thank my wife, who's sitting there. She's a dyslexic teacher at Peach Elementary, and my daughter.[1486.51][1486.51](Applause). I didn't realize the whole Peach staff was behind me.[1491.42][1491.42](Laughter). And my daughter also, who actually is leaving pre-K at Peach.[1499.74][1499.74](Laughter). And she'll be a kindergartner at Jones Academy this fall. I also like to thank my parents, Cheryl and Anthony Boyd, who are watching online, hopefully. My grandmother, I nell Boyd, and my grandmother, who's watching from heaven, Mary Edman. I'd just like to say thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to serve, the parents, students, and faculty at Sam Houston High School, all 3,800 students. It's a humbling task. I know under the direction of Mr. Juan Villarreal, he's an amazing leader, and I know he's going to just expand on my leadership. He's gonna already just, I just have so much, so much information that I gained from Ms. Elena Lopez. She, I came here two years ago, and she taught me everything I know. She gave me a chance when she could have picked a lot of other people, and under her leadership and with Webb, along with Ms. Betsy Burkeabout, we turned Webb into a school where kids grew, kids learned, and we made a lot of strides, and so, I'll ever be forever grateful to Ms. Elena Lopez. And I just know that under Mr. Villarreal's leadership, I'm gonna grow even more. I wish I could go on and on and on, but I know there are a lot of people to get to, so I just want to say once more, thank you so much. I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and go Texas.[1587.51][1587.51](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal, new Assistant Principal for Seguin High School, Mr. Luke DeFilippis.[1603.42][1603.42](Applause). Luke attended Texas A&amp;M University.[1609.74][1609.74](Woo!) Of course, they have to do that, yeah. First, Bachelor of Science in Parks Tourism Administration, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies, most recently was an Assistant Principal at Bailey Junior High, has been a Dean of Instruction at Uplift, has taught Earth and Space Science at Bowie High School in seventh and eighth grade at Hutch Junior High. Luke, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, I cannot thank you enough for the opportunity to serve the students, staff, and parents as the newest member of the Seguin Nation Admin Dream Team. If you recall, one year ago, I stood before you and acknowledged all the leaders that have helped lift me up and push me to become who I am today. Working at Bailey was the first time I have ever experienced an entire school doing a lifting. Thank you, Ms. Benavides, for setting me up to succeed. I need you to know that Bailey is no stepping stone. It is a launching pad that's propelled me and many before me into greater and greater heights. Now, you may not know this, but six years ago, my Assistant Principal took me aside and told me that he sees something in me, and he asked if I ever wanted to become an Assistant Principal. I laughed. He asked me the same question for an entire year. I have to admit, his persistence was highly effective, so effective that he convinced me to take on even more college debt, going back to school.[1700.33][1700.33](Laughter). Earning my master's degree, I can honestly say that I became an administrator because of him. That man is my new principal, Ray Borden, and now I get to prove him right.[1712.61][1712.61](Laughter). Finally, I'd like to thank my two boys, James and Jack, who understand that I cannot be home every night because I exist to serve others. And to my beautiful wife for allowing me to take on even greater responsibilities because when I work longer hours, so does she. I look forward to this New Year's adventures. I look forward to influencing an even larger community. I look forward to giving Seguin everything I've got. From the bottom of my heart, thank you all.[1744.51][1744.51](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Peach Elementary, Ms. Ebony McDonald.[1756.83][1756.83](Woo!) You brought your own fan.[1766.01][1766.01](Laughter). Ebony attended Oral Roberts University for International Community Development, Bachelor's, Concordia University for Master of Science in Ed Leadership Administration, most recently a bilingual fifth grade teacher, math teacher in Fort Worth ISD, has been a principal in Escuela Cristiana Ciudad de Luz, and has been a Spanish teacher also at an academy. Ebony, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for entrusting me with the responsibilities and leadership Thank you for entrusting me with the responsibilities and leadership role of Assistant Principal at Peach Elementary. I commit to serve this district and the parents, students, and staff of Peach Elementary with honor, excellence, and love. At this time, I would like to thank my family and friends, some of whom are present, and many who are watching via the livestream, especially my mom, hi Mom, in Michigan. Thank you for your love and support and for finding very humorous ways to keep me humble. To my former colleagues and administrators, thank you for helping me to grow and develop and for seeing this day even before I could. To my new colleagues and administrative team at Peach Elementary, thank you for the most rigorous and memorable interview ever. And thank you, most importantly, for welcoming me with open arms and supporting me at every turn. And I will, I look forward to the great things that we will accomplish this year. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Thornton Elementary, Mr. Corey Kovaleski. Corey attended Saint Olaf College for Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, Tarleton State University for Master of Ed in Ed Administration. Most recently, a 5th grade math and science teacher in Grapevine-Collville, has starred 3rd grade as well in Grapevine-Collville. Corey, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for the opportunity to join Arlington ISD and, most importantly, Thornton Elementary. Just clarification, I did attend Saint Olaf, but that was the name of the college, not the town where Rose and Island from Golden Girls was from. It's always a point of contention. I would like to thank my family that is here with me tonight, my wife Alicia, my daughters Kira and Brooklyn, my mother-in-law Brenda, and my father-in-law Bruce. Without them, I would not be where I am today. They've supported me, pushed me, encouraged me every step of the way. So, thank you to them. I would also like to thank my new family that is here with me tonight, my amazing Tigers, my principal Alicia, my fellow Assistant Principal Lisa, our dean, Alation. And we have some extraordinary educators back there, Julia, Cynthia, Nilsa. There may be others, but when I sat down, those were the only ones I saw. If there's more, I apologize. They are amazing ladies, and I have really enjoyed beginning working with them. I really am thrilled to grow with them as we work to grow our Tigers. My vision is to serve, and I can't wait to serve and make an impact with our community, with our students, with our staff. Pride is an acronym on our walls at Thornton, but it's not just on our walls. It's inside of me. It's what I am filled with tonight for this opportunity. Thank you again for this privilege, and, most importantly, go Tigers!
Next, the new Assistant Principal for Webb Elementary, Ms. Maria Luna. Maria attended Texas Wesleyan University for Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education in Spanish, Texas Wesleyan University for Master of Ed in Science, and then for Master of Education in Ed Administration. Maria was most recently the Instructional Specialist Support Interventionist in the World Languages Department, has taught 6th grade bilingual, 3rd grade bilingual, and 5th grade bilingual at Webb Elementary, has been a Spanish teacher in Birdville and Haltem High School, and has been a 5th and 6th grade bilingual teacher at Webb. Maria, congratulations.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, and Dr. Harco, thank you for the opportunity to serve as a leader and for investing me through the New Emergent Leaders Program. I am truly blessed to be standing here. I would like to thank the Department of World Languages for providing me with the opportunities to grow as a leader. You've prepared me with the tools necessary to be able to support, especially those lower grades, what I was missing. I am confident that the experiences you provided me has prepared me to better support my campus, and for that, I am grateful. To Mrs. Lopez and my new family, well, not necessarily my new family because I left, came back, left, and then went back. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I am truly, truly blessed to be part of your team. I am beyond excited for my new journey at Webb and the exciting things we're going to do this year. If it was up to me, we start class tomorrow, but they don't wanna start. To Mrs. Low and all the wonderful colleagues, my brother and my nine sisters that are watching wherever the cameras are, that have encouraged me and supported me throughout my journey, thank you. To my daughter Victoria and my son Anthony, remember that you can be anything you want to be, but it comes with hard work. And most important, allow yourself to be led by God's wisdom. And finally, to my hero, my husband Douglas. Thank you for all your support. And my husband in front of the board, he thinks that this new position is less hours and more at home. Well... You guys are my witnesses. It's not true. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for West Elementary, Ms. Amber Cannon. Amber attended Sam Houston State University for Bachelor of Music, Texas Christian University for Masters in Liberal Arts, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, was a music teacher at West Elementary School. Amber, congratulations.
President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this incredible opportunity to serve as the West Assistant Principal. West is home for me as an educator, and so, being able to take this next step at West is particularly special. I have to recognize my family and friends, and I'm not gonna look at them because they're gonna make me cry, who are with me tonight. Thank you for always believing in me. I want to recognize the educators across the district who have helped me grow. First, as a student in AISD, and then as a teacher, and then as a leader. I am the educator I am today because of their example and their encouragement. Thank you to our West family who is here tonight. The opportunity to serve as the Assistant Principal in a school so dedicated to our students is truly a joy and a privilege and an honor, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Martin High School, Ms. Kristi Graham. Kristi attended the University of Texas at El Paso for Bachelor of Arts in Communications, UT El Paso for Master of Arts in Communications. Most recently, was an Assistant Principal in El Paso ISD, speech and English teacher and coach in El Paso. Has also been a speech teacher and coach in Esleta, and English teacher and coach as well in high school there, a media traffic coordinator, and a graduate student assistant coach and student assistant coach. Kristi, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. President Mays, members of the boards, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to serve in such an illustrious district as AISD. That doesn't come lightly, and I just appreciate you guys giving me that opportunity. And to my Martin family, I would like to say thank you guys for welcoming me with open arms. Ms. Roddy, thank you so much for entrusting me and giving me an opportunity to join such an amazing group of administrators. You can truly feel the warrior pride when you walk through the halls. And thank you guys for helping me make my transition to Arlington, Texas, a whole lot smoother than what I thought it would be. But here we are. I would also like to thank my parents for instilling such great values in me. They've always told me just to, you know, don't let fear hold you back. And one thing that was about to hold me back from coming to Arlington was fear. But when I got here, I felt the love, and everybody was like, "You got a job in Arlington ISD?" And I was like, "Yeah," you know? They were like, "Oh, my God, that's an amazing place to work, and you're gonna love it." And I can already feel that love here. I would also like to take this time to say thank you to Ms. Roddy once again for entrusting me and giving me that opportunity. Thank you to my wonderful husband, who's very, very patient with a wife such as Kristi. Thank you to our wonderful kids for being supportive and understanding. They have an administrator who is a mom, and they have a football coach as a father. So, there's a lot of push-ups in reading at home. Our 3-year-old daughter handles those push-ups very well. You guys would be impressed with her push-ups. We also have a son away at the Coast Guard Academy, serving at the United States Coast Guard Academy, and he's starting his junior year. So, pray for him that he continues and makes it. And then, we also have a daughter who's gonna be attending a college when she makes a decision. And I would like to leave you guys with one nugget. Something that's important to me is love. And I feel that if you can, you know, share love with our kids and show them how much love can change the world, I think a lot of things will change. And so, I would ask for you guys just to kind of hold El Paso in Dayton in your prayers tonight, keep in your thoughts, and pray for them as they begin to put their lives back together. Thank you for this opportunity.
Wow. Can we start over? I have to say, what an amazing way to be able to start off a board meeting by listening to the humor, the passion, the... Just so excited. Welcome everybody to your new positions. We're so happy. Okay, back to script. So, as is our custom, we ask that the appointees follow Mr. Kale to the lobby for a receiving line so each of us can meet and welcome you. Mr. Kale, I'm assuming we, the number of, right, we'll be lining out here. So, if everyone would please let the board go first, we would appreciate that. And then, we will take a brief break to participate. Thank you. I now call this meeting back to order. Now, we come to our open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, are there any cards? There are no cards, so we will continue to move on with our agenda. So, next on our agenda is action items. Our first action item is considering designation of official delegates to the Texas Association of School Boards' TASB 2019 Delegate Assembly. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, we have to name someone, name a delegate and a alternate for the TASB Delegate Assembly. Delegate Assembly is something we do every year. It sets the legislative priorities, it sets all the different policies, everything to relate to TASB. Critical work, TASB is, most people don't know this, the largest nonprofit organization in the state of Texas. It's a very, very strong, powerful group. This Delegate Assembly's worked. As someone who's served many years, I really appreciate my colleagues stepping up and doing this. This time, I'd like to make, I move to nominate Justin Chapa as our delegate and Ms. Keisha Mays as our alternate for the 2019 Delegate Assembly.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Hogg. Dr. Raish?
I second that motion.
So, we've got a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Dr. Raish. Are there any questions? If not, please vote. Okay, we, we have 6 yes and 1 abstain. Okay, our next action item is consider the endorsement of a candidate for the Texas Association of School Boards' TASB Board of Directors. Dr. Raish, yours is already lit, so I can't do anything, so please.
Call on me, though. I just didn't wanna start talking without being acknowledged for the floor.
Thank you. Dr. Raish?
Absolutely. So, President Mays, I would, as making the motion, would like to support our colleague, Mr. Justin Chapa, as a full board endorsement as the candidate for the TASB Board of Directors.
Got a motion by Dr. Raish, a second by Mr. Hogg. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. Okay, Justin, I ignored you again. So, we've got 6 yes, 1 abstain. Motion passes. Our next action item is considering ordinance number 139, setting of the 2019 tax rate. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this is an item that we're bringing before the board. We have covered it with the Board Finance and Academics Committee as well. And so, I'll ask Cindy Powell to bring the presentation.
President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. This is the last step in our annual budget setting process each year, and that is our setting our tax rate. Our fiscal year begins on July 1, and so, we always have to adopt a budget by July 1. We do not get certified property values, though, from the Tierney Appraisal District until July 25. So, we always speak about this in June, that we have to adopt our budget by the end of June. But we will be coming back to the board in August with a tax rate for your consideration. So, when we prepared the preliminary budget, we based our revenue... So when we prepared the preliminary budget, we based our revenue budget on preliminary reports we had received from the Tarrant Appraisal Districts and projections that we made based on many, many years of data showing how those values changed from the time we first see them in... On April 30th and May 15th to July 25th. We use those projections, we build our revenue budgets, and then we come back in July, we go back and we revise our estimates, or we substitute the certified values into the formulas and see what change that might yield. So Tarrant Appraisal District has released its certified values. They released them on July 25th. And as you can see here, the bar in the far right in the chart is the 2019 certified value. It's $32.5 billion total. That's an increase of 13.7% over last year's certified value. And just to kind of give you context, when we built the budget, we made a projection that our values would be up 11.4%. So there... The certified values are just a tick higher than what we had estimated, which is a good thing. What we are proposing as a tax rate is a total of $1.29867. You will... May recall, in June, we presented this proposed tax rate to the board. The board authorized us to put this proposed rate in a disclosure that we have to publish in the paper every year, a notice about a budget and tax rate hearing. And so we published the notice in the paper, and we actually held that hearing on June 18th before the board considered adopting the budget. So that hearing was to cover the proposed tax rate along with the proposed budget. So now then, we have our certified values, and we can go forward and present them to you for your consideration. If we had been coming to the board and recommending an increase from what we proposed back in June, we would have to have another hearing, and we would have to issue another disclosure. But since we are not proposing an increase from what we originally proposed, then this process satisfies the requirements for adopting and considering the tax rate. You can see here that we are proposing to lower the maintenance and operations tax rate by seven cents. That is where we see the effect of House Bill 3 that was passed by the legislature this spring. We've all had a lot of discussion around that over many months, and certainly as we worked on our budget in June. But House Bill 3 makes a number of changes to public education. One thing, the state increased its investment in public ed funding. And then the bill also provides some relief to property owners by requiring all school districts to lower their M&amp;O tax rate. And we have to lower our rate by a very prescribed amount. So for Arlington ISD, we were taxing at $1.04. So that bill requires us to lower our rate by seven cents. Districts that were taxing had already maybe had a tax ratification election and were taxing at a much higher rate, would generally have to lower their M&amp;O rate by eight cents or more. So for us, it was seven cents. And so you see that change here. On the debt service side, we are proposing to leave the tax rate the same as last year. And that is because, as you'll see in just a minute, that is the rate that we need to pay the principal and interest on our bonded debt that is due in this upcoming year and to retire some bonded debt. So this is kind of an interesting slide. This really very clearly shows the impact of the changes... Some of the changes in House Bill 3, one in particular. We have discussion over the years about the fact that as our property values go up, our state aid goes down. Well, prior to House Bill 3, there was always a one-year lag because the state would use last year's property values in the funding formulas to determine the portion of total funding that we were responsible for, called a local share. So you always kind of... As long as your property values were going up, you were probably staying a tick ahead of that. And so there was a one-year lag always in the impact that higher values had on your state aid. House Bill 3, though, makes a change and requires school districts to use current-year values in the funding formulas. So the impact is immediate. So when I mentioned a minute ago that we had based the budget on a projected property value, and we had assumed that those values would be up 11.7%, then that's already factored into the budget. Now then, the certified values are a bit higher than we expected. But what you see here is while those higher values do generate more current-year tax revenue for us, it also results in a reduction in our state aid. So the net result is no change in the budget for this year. So I want to point that out. That's different. And so this is where we really see the effect of that. So just to summarize our budget, the budget that the board adopted is in the column second from the right, and you can see that that budget has a $6.9 million deficit. I'll remind everyone that that's much lower than what we anticipated even a year ago as we look forward because of the way the state funding system worked. And so the money... The additional monies that we have recognized because of House Bill 3 have certainly been very helpful here and have helped us reduce a budgeted deficit that we've been experiencing for several years. So even again, down in the column on the far right, substituting in our certified values into the revenue formulas, it makes no change in the budget at this point. On the debt service side, again, we are proposing to keep the rate the same. That's the rate that we need to generate the taxes to pay the scheduled principal and interest for the upcoming year and to retire about $25 million in debt that will help us continue to manage our tax rates going forward. So no change from last year's tax rate. So again, what we are proposing this evening is a total tax rate of $1.29867. And we will, as always, we'll continue to monitor changes from the Tarrant County Tax Assessor's Office on collections and certainly other aspects of our budget as well. Everything from enrollment to program participation that impacts state aid. We will watch, we will monitor, we will make projections within the year. And if appropriate, in the spring, when we bring our interim budget amendment, we will make recommendations to amend both the... Maybe the current-year taxes and/or state aid at that point, along with other adjustments that we may recommend to the budget based on our interim projections. So tonight, you have on the agenda an action item to consider adopting the 2019 tax rate. It is the rate that we need to fund our budget. And there is some very... Wow. I know, I know. They're really excited, aren't they? Okay. So, right. So there's some very prescribed language that we have to use always when adopting our tax rate. And it's very counterintuitive, but we have to use this language, okay? And you see it printed here on the slide. The tax rate that we are adopting, while it is actually seven cents less than the rate we adopted last year, it yields us more total revenue this year. And so we have to state that in the motion, that this tax rate effectively represents a 4.48% increase in the tax rate. So it's awkward. It's hard to explain to people, but it's part of the truth in taxation requirements. And so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have and ask that you consider approving the ordinance to adopt the tax rate.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Powell, when we had this original presentation, I believe it was back in May or June, and I'm a little cloudy on it, but at the time, there was information presented to us that showed that at the time, we had, I think, the third lowest tax rate of school districts in Tarrant County. Would that remain true with... Is that still true with this reduction?
And we'll have to wait and see what everyone else does with their own tax rates. All school districts have to lower their rate. And then certainly, we don't know what others are doing on the debt service side of their rate. You are correct, there are 21 districts in Tarrant County. And if you rank order them from highest to lowest, our tax rate is 18th. And so there are three that have a lower tax rate than us. And so we won't know until everyone's finished adopting their tax rates where we fall in that new order.
Okay. But absent some sort of moderate change, unexpected change, we're going to be one of the lowest still.
I think we will be very close to the bottom still.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chapa?
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Chapa, your question is the same point I was going to say. It's an important factor of, you know, we have... We're one of the few districts that hasn't done a tax ratification election, and we constantly keep our rate at a manageable level. And I appreciate Ms. Powell and Mr. Drolinger for bringing back these certified values, coming back and understanding that, you know, better to be under on what we're estimating where they came from. Ms. Powell, you said this is something we have to read and do this. Just another thing, the legislature likes to make a little more complicated than what it is, the way it works out. Because when I see this, and I understand the effective cost, but I think the key point you said is when those certified values came in at 13.7 and we projected 11.1 or whatever we had on there, we didn't see any extra revenue. And I think that's an important thing that people don't understand. I always tell people, it's like a balance scale from where it comes in. Theirs goes up, ours goes up, theirs goes down on that process. So it's one of those things the legislature does. The legislature hopes for increased tax rates because it's less money they have to contribute from their side, and they don't lower their values. Luckily, this year, we had a seven cents compression is what they did, which was on them. And I'm glad they did, and I appreciate them decreasing this rate by seven cents. It was a needed compression, and we appreciate them doing those on that. So with that, I'll make a motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.29867, respectively a 4.48% increase on the tax rate.
Is there a second? Dr. Reich?
I second.
So we've got a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Dr. Reich. Are there any questions? Please vote. Motion passes in the affirmative. Okay. Our next action item is consider a resolution authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Trustees to execute any and all instruments, appropriate or necessary, to effectuate the conveyance of the property located at 2401 Robert Circle, Arlington, Texas 76010, to the city of Arlington in exchange for property located at 2200 Greenway Street, Arlington, Texas 76001. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this is an important part of our next discussion, which is the bond recommendation in that it allows us to have facilities that are adequate in terms of space, but also closer to the student population. So this is a land swap resolution, and I'll let Ms. Powell go through a presentation.
President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, on Tuesday evening, Dr. Cavassos and Mrs. Mays and I, and Mr. Horn, and the co-chairs from our Capital Needs Steering Committee, who are both here this evening, Garrett Hill, Jenny DeKine, attended city council meeting. They had the same item on their agenda, and they asked that we come make a presentation about our, what I'm going to call our East Arlington plan as we go through this discussion. And so I'll share with you what Dr. Cavassos presented to the council. It's... A lot of this is very familiar because we've been discussing it as we've talked about our capital needs and potential solutions to address those. So we shared with them that our mission is to empower, engage all students to be contributing responsible citizens striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. And we shared that all of our work is grounded in that mission. We know that there are capital investments that we have... That we make to support that mission, and they include simply making sure that we have the right capacity to serve our enrollment. And that's something that districts do year after year after year, and carefully projecting enrollment trends to make sure that you have adequate capacity in all parts of town and that you're constantly monitoring that. Also, having the right kinds of learning spaces. We all know that instruction changes over time. Programs change over time. So making sure that we have the right kinds of spaces for our instructional programs. And so again, talk back to the mission about providing relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. That's very key. That having the right learning spaces is very key to that. Protecting the investments in the buildings, just making sure that we are managing the, what I'm going to call the capital maintenance type needs, make sure that we are upgrading systems, HVAC systems, electrical systems, plumbing, what have you, roofs, on a scheduled basis, and that we monitor those systems and make sure that we plan very carefully around their actual useful life, and we take care of them so that we can maximize those useful lives. Current technology, access for all of our students, and increased access to programs. Again, that... We've said before, that can take many forms. It may be the buses to get kids to and from special programs. It may be instruments, music instruments, that kids have access to without having to pay a rental fee. And it can be just having more choice offerings in programs. So making sure that all of our students have access to the programs that most interest them and best serve their needs. And then excellence for all students. We explained to the council that we had been engaged in a very comprehensive assessment process over really the last year and a half that looked at our programming priorities, our instructional needs, and then also involved review of all of our facilities, a study of our capacity and our utilization, all to yield what our needs will be for the next five years through 2025. And so in a very summary fashion, here are assessment findings. And they include in various categories, programming. We have identified a need for full-day programming, for full-day pre-K. That was another change that the state made through House Bill 3. They are funding that. We have capital investments that we need to make to provide for the full-day pre-K programs. Continuing our junior high... Or our fine arts dual-language academies into the junior high level and high school level, and providing career tech offerings at all of our high schools. We have several high schools that don't have welding labs or construction labs, and so students at those high schools don't even have an option to take the basic-level courses there that they need to take in order to subsequently register in higher-level classes for the junior and senior here at the Career Tech Center. Today, they have to travel typically to the Ag Science Center to take those basic-level courses. So we have a need to invest there, along with need to continue our investment in providing appropriate spaces even at the Career Tech Center for new program and to meet existing program demand. Educational adequacy, playgrounds is a need we had at all of our elementary schools. We'll show a slide on that in a few minutes. Kitchens and restrooms needed upgrading in many of our schools, along with athletic spaces and fine arts facilities. So our gyms, in many cases, needed new bleachers. Locker rooms needed new lockers. Our high school football fields needed new turf, will need new turf during this next five years. during this next five years, along with resurfacing of their tracks. And so, a number of things were identified through the assessment work. In the area of our facilities, we noted that we have a number of aging facilities, and we began to develop a plan to address those. You'll hear more about that in just a minute. We also identified that we have some excess capacity in East Arlington Elementary Schools that we need to address and have the opportunity to do so here, along with life cycle and conditioning. So, again, I mentioned, our buildings are typically built to last at least 50 years, 50 to 75 years. Yet, just like our homes, the air conditioning systems have a much shorter useful life, the roofs, the flooring, the plumbing. And these things typically have to be replaced two to three times within the life of a building. And so, making sure that we have those things on a schedule, a manageable schedule, is important. And we've called out through our assessment, those systems, those things, those building improvements that are needed through the year 2025. And then, operational efficiencies, that ties very closely back to the excess capacity item, and we'll talk more about that in just a minute. In particular, we talked with the council about East Arlington and our findings from the assessment relative to East Arlington. In the area of utilization, this is where, again, we identified that we have some excess capacity in our elementary schools. We've seen some changes in enrollment trends, and our projections 10 years out from our demographer indicate that we will continue to see that trend, and we will experience, or we will have, excess capacity at least through those 10 years, the next 10 years. We know that the Carter Building is full. We also know that we have aging schools in East Arlington, Carter being one of them. Carter is over, I think it's 61 years old itself. The average age of a number of schools in that area, five in particular that you see listed here, Berry, Knox, Roark, Thornton, and Carter, the average age is 61. So, you know, this is something fairly new for Arlington. It's not uncommon for well-established school districts throughout the state to reach this point and begin to need to rebuild or replace existing schools. They just reach a point where it no longer makes sense to continue renovating and trying to upgrade a building, because at some point, that building will stop functioning for you like you need it to function. It will not have those learning spaces that are appropriate for our current instructional programming and the way we deliver instruction. And you tend to not be able to fully take advantage of operational efficiencies on equipment, everything from HVAC equipment to kitchen equipment and lighting and what have you. So, this is something that was a major finding for us in that particular area. We also know that the Carter site is, it has impeded our use of the property. There is erosion in a creek that clips the football field right behind Carter. And so, as we all know, we've actually had to move that football field once already. We do not have space to put a track around the football field. So, while in the current bond program, we provided a track for every other junior high school, we cannot do that at the Carter site. Parking is very limited, and that building itself is very full. So, these were findings that we then presented to a Capital Needs Steering Committee, along with other detailed findings. This board appointed a committee of 37 people and charged them with reviewing our assessment and bringing back recommendation to the board for prioritized needs through the year 2025 for our consideration and how to fund those. And so, that committee met through the spring. They've reported out, as you know, on June 25th to the board. And since that time, we've had, we've had a lengthy discussion twice, once at that meeting on June 25th, and then also last Thursday, the board had an in-depth discussion about their recommendations and how to best address those recommendations. So, the committee recommended capital needs totaling $965.9 million across four broad categories that you see listed here. And in particular, again, made, the committee made recommendations specific to East Arlington, and this involves a partnership with the city, an agreement with the city on how to best address a portion of these recommendations. So, and all these things are interconnected, so there's a lot here, but it all, this entire plan addresses those needs that we spoke about just a minute ago. So, to address the excess capacity in the area and to address the fact that we have two very aging facilities in Roark and Knox, we're recommending that we close Roark and Knox, and then re-boundary those kids to neighboring schools. Two of those neighboring schools will be rebuilt as part of this plan. That's Thornton and Berry. We would rebuild them on their existing sites. And then, we would actually redraw boundaries among several schools, including Berry Crow, Blanton, Johns, Rankin, and Thornton, as necessary to balance out the enrollment in that entire area. We would swap land with the City of Arlington. So, we would give to the City of Arlington our Roark Elementary property in exchange for the city giving us Westler Park. Westler Park is adjacent to Knox Elementary. So, that swap would give us a total of a little over 18 acres of land at the Knox and Westler Park site that we can then use for the new Carter site. And so, that helps us, as you can see here, address a number of issues. One, the excess capacity, one, the aging facilities, and then also the fact that the Carter site is just not appropriate for a junior high school. And then, we would ultimately repurpose the existing Carter site down the road for a need to be determined. So, we shared with the council that all the schools involved in this plan are very close together, so it means minimal disruption to our students in terms of where they attend and at the elementary level. And in fact, what we can see from this slide, and what we demonstrated to the council, is that by moving Carter from its current location to the Knox location, we're actually moving Carter much closer to its students. And access will be significantly improved for those students, and we should gain some efficiencies on busing in, because more students will be, will live much closer to the new Carter site. We've also recommend that at the Carter site, we actually turf the football field there, and we will have a track, and we will make that facility, we will open it and make it available to the neighborhood public there. The city will rebuild the park on the Roark site, and we have agreed that we will fund the necessary cost to relocate that park. So, this slide simply shows the aerial view of Knox. You can see Knox on the right-hand side of the screen. The park is on the left, and at the top of the screen, and the little item on the top right, a little white space, is a splash, what they call a splash pad. And all that's part of the city park that would be relocated to the Roark property. And then, we would use that site for Carter. The Roark site, you see here, it's a much more compact site. It's about six acres. And so, as part of the agreement, Arlington ISD will demolish the old Roark before conveying that property to the city. So, all of these things, like I said, are interconnected, and they help us accomplish several outcomes, including making a very significant investment in a part of town where we have a number of aging facilities. We have aging facilities beyond these that we're addressing in this proposed bond program. We would be replacing a total of five aging elementary schools with three new schools, and then, in providing, which would provide modern learning environments for students. And then, moving the Carter Junior High School to a site closer to its students on a piece of property that's much more conducive to providing the support facilities that you need for a junior high school. Improved utilization of our facilities, we'll have full-day pre-K offerings in the elementary schools here. We'll be making safety and security improvements with the buildings, and then we certainly, we gain operating efficiencies by replacing these older buildings with new buildings. And also, with just our staffing, consolidating students in a more efficient manner allows us to reduce some of the staffing. We've been very clear, we visited with the staff today at Roark and at Knox, and we've been clear with everyone involved that no one loses their job. We have, through natural attrition, we have plenty of opportunities for people to move into other positions and move to other schools. But we do gain some operating efficiencies on staff, such as principals, secretaries, librarians, custodial staff, those things that are pretty unique to a building. And so, that helps us on the M&amp;O side, manage the M&amp;O side of our budget, along with utilities as well. And we'll recognize savings there by having modern equipment and more energy-efficient design buildings. So, the resolution to authorize the land swap is here for your consideration this evening. And this just highlights the key terms in there. Again, we would swap the Roark property for the Westler Park site, and that is contingent upon the school district passing the bond package to fund the entire plan. If that bond package were, for some reason, to not pass, then this deal would be null, okay? We are, each party, the city and the school district, having independent appraisals of both properties, and we will reconcile the differences between the two. We recognize that the Westler Park property is a larger site, has more acreage there than ours, and so, we'll reconcile that difference and make the city whole on that. We'll demo Roark Elementary, and then, we will also dedicate a drainage easement to maintain the drainage that currently exists across the park site, and we will replace the park improvements on the Roark site. So, that resolution is before you this evening, and with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I will say that the, I should have said this a moment ago, city council approved the resolution Tuesday night on a vote of nine to zero.
Very good. Are there any questions from trustees? Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Mays. I don't necessarily have any questions. I have a few comments, and then I am prepared to make the motion to grant this resolution for a land swap. I just want to say thank you, Ms. Powell, for laying everything out so well. Thank you to you and the district and the Capital Needs Committee, and looking at truly what serves, what would serve the students the best, and really maximizing the efficiencies. It's very interesting the way you laid it out. Similar to our 2014 bond, this is very interconnected on so many fronts, where it's, they're all puzzle pieces, and what you laid out, you can't get much more of, we've got to do this to do that in order to get that done, so that we can do this over here. And again, with the ultimate at the end, having the student experience and student success as the bottom line with all of that. So, I really appreciate you taking the time to go through that and demonstrate what the real value and the expected outcome is for this opportunity and the entire potential bond that we'll be discussing. We, as we've heard in previous meetings and have seen over time in monitoring the 2014 bond, we had similar outcomes as metrics to, as far as targets to hit, and exceeded all of those. And I fully expect that this would be a similar situation here, and ultimately, just building upon the previous success that our community has supported. So, as you said, the condition is that it's passage of a bond, and I think that being able to take four schools down to two and go through that very heavy lift of boundary adjustments and changes, it's not easy, but it's necessary in order to enhance that student experience. And that's exactly what we did in the 2014 bond as well, with the closer of junior high schools and the consolidation there. So, I do appreciate you putting that out there. And the reality that, yes, Arlington ISD is an older district, and there are districts that actually do this on much more of a frequent occurrence. They don't wait. Where the average lifespan is 61 years, they do it at 30 and 40, which is kind of remarkable to me. I don't know if I'd support it, but it's, it is something that is new to our community, but it is absolutely necessary in order to keep focusing forward, as was stated in the district, stated in the district address yesterday. So, with that, I move to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Trustees to execute any and all instruments appropriate or necessary to effectuate the conveyance of the property located at 2401 Robert Circle, Arlington, Texas 76010, to the City of Arlington in exchange for property located at 2200 Greenway Street, Arlington, Texas 76010, and to attach a copy of the resolution to the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Chapa?
I'd like to second that motion, and if I may make just a couple of comments.
Absolutely.
We can talk about the, I plan to talk a little bit more about this project in the next presentation, but just as the focus on this is a land swap, I just want to point out a few things. So, I spent half my childhood, three blocks from Roark and a block from Knox. My mom and uncles went to Roark and then Knox, when it was the original Ferguson Junior High, and spent a lot of time at Helen Westler Park, when it was an actual pool before it was, you know, a glorified splash pad, and played in that creek that runs through the Knox site quite a bit. And when this proposal first came out of the committee, I got a lot of questions from people that I grew up with on the east side and what this meant for that area, because that, that space is very important to the community. There's the overhead picture that was up, you can't really quite tell, but there's a walking path there. There's several small soccer fields there. There's the Helen Westler Park, the pool part, there's the park part. It is a focal point for the community. And I just want to commend the district and the city for being, working so well together to put this land swap before us tonight, because I think we're doing it right. So, the soccer fields are going to be replaced by, we've committed to putting in a competition, or not a competition space, but the football field and the track that will be open to the community. So, we're preserving that aspect of Helen Westler Park, and then the other aspects of Helen Westler Park will be at the new Roark site. And so, we have, you know, made a commitment to the community that that aspect of their life will not change. In exchange, also, they're going to get these fantastic new buildings, and, you know, schools are community centers, and schools are points of pride for local neighborhoods. And to get the state-of-the-art facilities that we're talking about in here and preserve all the other aspects of the surrounding community that they enjoy today, I think is, speaks very well of how this district approaches its community engagement, very well of the city of being a cooperative partner. And I can't say enough good things about this particular part of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So, we have a motion made by Dr. Reich, a second by Mr. Chapa. Any other questions? Let's vote. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Next on the agenda, we move to discussion action item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and tonight, we continue our discussion and potential action on our capital needs recommendations for 2020 to 2025. And I'll share that we've had a robust journey to get to this point. It has been with committees, with input, with surveys, with discussions, with staff, board, et cetera, even to the point of, even this week, with the Even to the point of even this week with the city council as well, to come to this point in the recommendation phase. And so again, as I committed to the committee that every time I would thank them and thank the two co-chairs as representatives for their work. And I shared with them that the thank you will feel less and less for all the things that you've done. It feels good at the beginning, but then you go through this process. So again, thank you. And thank you to Cindy and Kelly and Tony and everyone that's been involved in this. I will say that over the course of this, of this discussion and this progression, we have had, again, a lot of different input. But we also have had, you know, considerations for things such as the expansion of the Career Tech Center, softball and things like that that are really important. And so tonight, Ms. Powell is going to do a presentation. But also, we've made some, we're going to make a recommendation of some things that we see based on the discussion that we've had, based on the input that we received, that we see that could be recommendations to accomplish the maximum and also stay focused on the big picture, which is what it means for our students. So it'll come with that as well tonight in our presentation, our recommendation for a few tweaks that are, I think, important and relevant for maximizing our opportunity here. So this time, I'll turn it over to Cindy Powell.
Thank you again. You've seen all of these slides twice now. So I will try to be brief on this to get us down to the point of some discussion. But you well know that our Capital Needs Steering Committee on June 25th presented a capital needs package totaling $965.9 million across these four broad areas. And we've shown this slide, and it's kind of hard to see on a big screen like this. But as Dr. Kavasos has said, this one slide does about as good a job as anything we've come up with to summarize the different projects in the package. And it sorts it from the largest component down to the smallest component. The biggest component, you see the note over here, over 70% of these dollars are for taking care of district-wide condition renovations and rebuilding old schools. And so that's very, very significant. Also included in here, safety, security and technology needs, pre-K improvements, also investment in career tech programs at four high schools, improvements to athletic facilities, fine arts facilities, transportation, where we have buses and service vehicles included, and fine arts equipment and furnishings and uniforms. So a lot of detail rolls up into this particular summary. So again, to hit the highlights, included in here are dollars to replace four schools, Carter, Berry, Thornton and Webb. And we just had a lengthy discussion on that entire plan. Also, there are funding, there is funding here to create a junior high school fine arts dual language academy. And that will be at Gunn Junior High. We've actually already engaged architects for the design work at that site. But the plan would involve renovations of the existing building and a classroom addition there to accommodate that program, along with the traditional school students who will continue to attend Gunn. Also, funding for the eventual creation of the high school level fine arts dual language program at a school to be determined. And then replacing a portion of our service center, the transportation and security facility there. And then a classroom addition at Bailey Junior High to right-size it. Again, this is some of the same information we looked at a moment ago about the East Arlington plan, so I will not spend much time there. Again, we're trying to gain efficiencies and at the same time, replacing aging schools with this particular plan. This is the, again, the map that shows that when you move Carter, Carter's inside the big blue circle on the left of the screen. When you move it to Knox, which is the circle further to the right, you see that it's much closer to its students. All the little blue dots represents Carter students. So in terms of condition improvements, we've had a lot of discussion around the facility condition assessment work that has taken place over the last year and a half. And we assessed every building. We did it with our own staff and also with civil engineers, architects, kitchen consultants, roof consultants and others, ADA specialists, who all, everyone had their piece of expertise in looking at buildings. We put all the data together. And then the two architect firms that assisted us in this ultimately came behind the detailed work and did an entire building assessment. And helped us identify the overall condition of each building and assign it to a tier. So we had tiers one through five. A tier one school is a school that was one of our oldest schools and had the most significant needs. A tier five school would be a school that was newer and those that have had recent significant investments in them and had less needs for, projected for the next five years. So that helped us kind of see where our needs fell across all of our schools. And we worked from that date at the end to prioritize the things that we felt like need to be addressed in this next five years. This chart shows a representation by percentage of the total dollars for each high school network to the total of the overall condition recommendations. And what you see, looking at the column on the far right, is that the greatest percentage of work is in the Sam Houston network. That's the East Arlington area, involves those schools we just talked about. And also, this is our largest network, so we have way more square feet of space in that area than any other. So you can see that our condition needs track very closely and very nicely to the combination of age and square feet in these different areas. I'll back up and say that everything other than new construction is captured in these particular dollars. And that includes everything from upgrades to air conditioning and heating systems, kitchens, restrooms, paving. This is where new playgrounds are captured for all the elementary schools. The interior work, the painting, the lighting, the flooring, renovations that are necessary for full day pre-K. And then athletics improvements and in fine arts improvements. In terms of full day pre-K, again, this is something that's been mandated by the state through House Bill III and funded by the state. So that is a welcome change. And, but we do need in many of our facilities to add bathrooms to individual classrooms. In some cases, we need a classroom addition because we, when we serve students full day, then we need twice as many classrooms for pre-K as we have had up to this point. And so in some places, we will need a building addition to accommodate the additional students and furnishings. We've talked a lot about athletic improvements. There's funding in here to upgrade our current Wildman and Cravens fields. And those upgrades include upgrades to restrooms, new locker rooms that are the right size for our athletic programs and our guests, concession stands, ticket booths, replacing the field turf and the track. And then also scoreboards and adding bleachers and replacing bleachers. Just bringing those up to standard. We have had a lot of discussion about the fact that we need to create a third competition stadium. Because today, in addition to Wildman and Cravens, we rent UTA's Maverick Stadium. And they are phasing that out. And so with six high schools, we need a third competition stadium to support those schools. So what we are recommending is upgrading and renovating an existing campus high school football field to be a third competition stadium, much like Wildman and Cravens. And so there are dollars factored in here to make those adjustments as well, along with dollars to upgrade facilities at the high schools and the junior highs, including gymnasiums and locker rooms and in other tennis courts and bleacher systems across the district. There's also funding here for auditorium finishes. We've made some significant investments in our high school auditoriums in this current bond program. But those were mostly involved, the stage itself, the lighting, the sound system. We still have some work we need to do in the house portion of those auditoriums with paint and what have you. And then career tech renovations. As we've already discussed, we have several schools that cannot offer basic level welding and construction classes or even culinary programs because they don't have the right kind of spaces. So there's dollars here to create those, so that all of our students have equal access to all of our program offerings. At the elementary schools, we have recognized a need to replace all of our current playgrounds. There's a picture at the top of one of our current playgrounds. And so we have included dollars here to create new playgrounds where we would replace the surface with a cushioned surface that is ADA accessible. We'll have two different playground structures, one for older grade levels, one for younger grade levels. All of the equipment will be ADA accessible and then cover those structures with cannibes. In terms of safety, security and technology, there are recommendations here totaling $97.1 million for infrastructure, continuing our normal replacement cycle for devices, both students and teachers and staff. And strategic one-to-one, where we would provide devices for every student in certain programs where it makes sense, such as STEM program or our early college high school programming. In the area of fine arts, we have approximately $7 million of needs, mostly involving instruments, theater equipment, and replacing uniforms on their normal schedule. And then in transportation, we've identified needs for two, to purchase 212 vehicles over the next five years. 117 of those are replacements of existing vehicles. We use a lifespan of 12 years as a target. Some of our vehicles last us longer than 12 years. A few, for various reasons, don't quite last 12 years. But that is our target life cycle for vehicles. And so there are 117 vehicles that will reach the end of their useful life in the next five years. And so we've scheduled them for replacement. We've also identified some need to add to our fleet, including shuttle buses. Those small buses we've begun buying that help us significantly during the day transport small groups of kids between various sites, much more efficiently than using large buses. So and the needs there total up to about $15.5 million. So again, all these things compile, roll up to a total of $965.9 million. When the committee presented to the board, they presented that they'd heard the desire to stay below $1 billion. So administration brought to them some recommendations for some things we thought could come out to help us accomplish that. The committee then had discussion around which of those things that they felt like might be good candidates to come back. The boards had discussion around that each of the last two work sessions we've had. And so based on the discussions that we've had with the board, based on feedback that we've gotten from the community, from the board, from the committee itself, we do think that as administration, that we would recommend making several adjustments to the $965 million that, the items that make that up this evening. We still would recommend holding the total at $965 million. But there are several projects that we think should be added in. And on the flip side, some things that we think we can take out so that there's no change to the total cost. So softball, for example. We recommend that we put back into the package funding to provide competitive softball fields at all six of our traditional high schools. That's something that the committee spoke about and that the board had a lot of discussion about in our last meeting. Also, a classroom addition at the Career Tech Center. We know today that our Career Tech Center had to reject really over 400 course requests this year for both the Ag Science Center and the Career Tech Center, because they are full. We just are absolutely full. And so in looking at the career tech improvements and renovations that are already in the package at several of our high schools, that helps us address the capacity need at the Ag Science Center. Because as I mentioned earlier, we have kids from several schools who are traveling to the Ag Science Center to take basic welding courses there. And so that's created a problem with us being able to accommodate students in some of the Ag Mechanics program that is also offered at the Ag Science Center. According to Ginger Polster, my conversations with her, if the students who are attending here because they don't today have appropriate space on their home campus for those entry-level courses, if we're able to serve them on their home campus, that frees up capacity at the Ag Science Center to take care of their course needs there. At the Career Tech Center, we have worked with Ginger and with Susan Patterson, our Director of Career Tech, about the need for possibly a 10-classroom addition in lab space at the Career Tech Center. As we discussed at the last board meeting, that space would help us address the need for additional capacity at the Career Tech Center, along with addressing and making available appropriate space for a high school health sciences program that could come, a new instructional program in the next few years. Well, so we talked at the last meeting some about our gyms. And we had targeted trying to replace metal gyms at our elementary schools. And ultimately, there were, most of them are being replaced. There was one, there are three, that we had identified and said, well, we weren't going to replace them in this particular bond package. Two of those, the buildings are high on the list, in our opinion, is needing replacement in the next bond program. So it made sense to wait on those two. That left us with one metal gym at Duff Elementary School. So we're recommending that we go ahead and add dollars back in to take care of that. We would then also make some recommendations for some reductions in various places to completely offset those increases. All right? And I'll mention a few of those. Junior high field lighting and junior high field improvements, I'm sorry, junior high field lighting and leaving the improvements in, the improvements being restrooms, concessions and storage. Also, eliminating some dollars, some dollars that we had factored in for flexible furnishings. We had made an attempt to get some dollars into the bond package to provide flexible furnishings. And quite honestly, I think that our dollars are better spent on some of these other things. And I think that we can accomplish what we need in terms of instruction without those flexible furnishings there. And then technology infrastructure and technology replacement cycle. And working with Mr. Branham, we've identified some opportunities to make some adjustments there. And we think that we'll still be able to, or we know we'll be able to, provide for our needs over the next five years for technology. And then tier five, or you heard me speak a minute ago about, through our assessments, we placed all of our buildings in tiers, one through five. Our tier five buildings are ones that are in the best condition, have the least amount of needs. And so we feel confident and comfortable saying that we can come back and we can make some additional adjustments in that tier of building without sacrificing any of the content in the major objectives we have, including playgrounds for elementary schools, et cetera. Then phasing in the implementation or the addition of marquees across Then phasing in the implementation or the addition of marquees across all of our schools. We had originally planned to try to provide marquees for all schools. And we think we can phase that in and make a very significant investment in that area, yet still recognize a little bit of savings. There's one area, one other thing I want to touch on. I think at our last meeting, there was some discussion around the potential replacement of the service center. And when, through our original assessment, we had identified a need to maybe replace the entire service center that includes the maintenance area, warehouse, transportation, security operations. As we moved along, we determined that we could phase that work and allow us to better manage the total dollars in this next bond package while not compromising our need for operations at that facility. And so we had a lot of discussion around that, I think even at the last meeting. And there's been some question about what truly is needed there. What we've captured and what we are funding or recommending for funding in this particular package is the replacement of the transportation facilities, the addition of covered parking for our buses there, addition of employee parking, and replacement of the security office. So we would combine office space, I think is what our plan is for both transportation and security will be housed together in a new facility. And we will expand the area that we have for providing, for safeguarding and storing our buses and other vehicles, along with providing appropriate employee parking lot. We would then come back in potentially a future bond package, potentially the very next one, and take care of a Phase Two, if you will, for the more southern portion of that service center, which includes plant services, the trade shops, and the warehouse. And so, and we can do that very nicely and be able to still service our schools well and meet the needs of our employees and our departments in that area. And so I just, I felt like, you know, I think we needed to touch back on that. Is that we have allowed dollars here to take care of the most critical portion of the plant services center rebuild as part of this Phase One, if you will, in this 2019 package. So with that, we've seen this slide many times about expected outcomes. Again, we keep hearing about things being interconnected and an intent to help us accomplish our mission and provide appropriate learning spaces and the right type and right amount of capacity for all of our students. Certainly, safety and security ranks as one of our very top priorities always. And we've got significant investment here to increase security systems and safety at all of our locations, along with making condition improvements and beginning to do this on a very deliberate, very scheduled basis so that we are taking care of needs for all of our buildings on a routine basis. Providing for pre-K and early education services, gaining efficiencies across all of our schools, and then making sure that we provide appropriate choice and access for programming opportunities for students. So August 19th is the deadline for ordering an election for the November general election date. And so that's coming up on us fairly quickly. We've already touched on the items here listed under, one of the items under August 8th, and that is considering the land swap resolution. And the board has already approved that. So with that, we'll be happy to answer questions you may have and determine how to best go forward.
Ms. Powell, thank you very much for that presentation. At this time, are there any trustees with questions and or comments? Okay, seeing no light. Ah, I see one now. Mr. Chappa.
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. I am really happy to hear about some of the work that's been done over the last week to incorporate the feedback that the board's given over the past several meetings. I think that the community, through the committee process, you know, worked for six months and they came to us with a very strong package. And they had some things that were priorities to get back in. And we've heard the needs over the last several meetings on that. And so I think it's excellent that we were able to find the cost savings throughout the package to get softball and the CTC additions in. We, the CTC is just an unmitigated success story. And to hear that we might have had a waitlist, and I don't know if all this information was before the committee, it's sort of come out to light as we've asked the questions. But, you know, getting students off the waitlist and into CTC programs is part of our strategic plan. And so that, I'm happy to see all that come back in. If we go to the, I just kind of want to do a quick walkthrough here to highlight a few things that stand out to me about this bond package. And that's, if we can look at Slide 2. So I'm not going to go through every line item in here, but some things that stand out to me about this bond, because it is a really big number. I mean, it is the biggest bond that this district will have done by far. But if you walk through each of these line items and you hear, you study the justifications for them, I think the large number, you know, it's an inevitable result of the needs that are in this district. We did the right thing. We had consultants and engineers do a comprehensive facilities assessment. I mean, there is an objective basis for every dollar that's in here, and I think that needs to be said. I mean, the top line item there, almost 40% of the package, is top priority condition needs. I mean, this is maintenance and upgrades to buildings that we are an older district and many of them are reaching longer in their life cycles. And so we have prioritized replacing some of those buildings. But there are many, you know, buildings of comparable age or near comparable age that have many needs and we are addressing them. We have a pretty large deferred maintenance backlog. And this package would take care of a great deal of that at one time and build efficiencies for us going forwards and actually lengthen the lifespan of campuses that we otherwise would probably be in a position of having to replace sooner than we would like to. And so I think that that's important to note is that we are spending money, in some respects, to save money down the road at campuses that we can reasonably extend the lifespan on. Something that stands out to me throughout this entire package is the care that the district took and the committee took to make sure that we're addressing sort of two or more birds with one stone. And Ms. Powell, you did a fantastic job of explaining how we're doing that with the project in East Arlington and getting, you know, several campuses. When this, when the first needs assessment came back and we knew that there were more than three campuses that needed replacement in this bond, but there were three, in the original proposal, it was three campuses. And we're able to, we're going to get five just in the East Arlington interconnected proposal that's in here. And so, you know, addressing many things at once, and even down with the Wright-Sizing-Gun Junior High because of the Fine Arts Stool Language Academy. That was a, the Fine Arts Stool Languages Academy were a big part of the 2014 bond in terms of a step forward in the type of programming that this district is doing. And I was part of the committee that helped put that one together. And the proposal from the beginning is that this was going to be a program that was going to provide a student experience that ran through the 12th grade. And so we knew with a five-year bond, which the 2014 bond was a five-year bond, that we were going to have to come back at some point and look at where those students were going to go to junior high and high school. And so we were there now. But the Gunn Junior High proposal, I think, is really interesting in that the current Gunn Junior High students are going to continue going to Gunn Junior High. And so when we're looking at making a significant investment in Gunn of almost $35 million in renovations there, Gunn is one of our older campuses, but the students who are in the Fine Arts Stool Language program are going to benefit from the work that's being done there and the existing students. So this is a junior high that we are going to have, needed to make significant renovations to anyway. And we're able to continue the progression of the Fine Arts Stool Language program. And we need to make that building right for the students who are currently there. And we're accomplishing both things with this bond package. And the same thing, I am certain, is going to happen when, with the Wright-Sizing, the high school, as the Fine Arts Stool Language students move up, whatever high school the district ultimately lands on for that. There's going to be significant investments made there that are going to benefit the students who are already there because we are continuing a program up that started with a 2014 bond package. And now we've got the facilities needs now that we're addressing, again, multiple things at once. Don't want to slight anything here. The transportation investments, I think, are really important. We've talked about how much our CTC center, how many students our CTC center serves, the growth of our CTE programs. We know now that with CCMR and other aspects of the state accountability systems, the state does grade us to some extent on how well we are educating our kids in the career and technology field. And a comment I hear a lot is, well, why aren't you preparing kids for the future with real life? You know, they don't necessarily need to go to college, you know, why aren't you preparing them? And the answer is, is we absolutely are. Come take a tour of the CTC. But one reason the CTC works so well and our other career tech programs and other specialized programs is we've committed to providing transportation to many of the students who participate in those programs. And so we need, we have significant transportation needs. And we're continuing to invest in that with this bond program, recognizing that those needs are only going to grow with the growth and success of those programs. And also, is something that came out recently, what was a discussion as well, is we're committing going forward to providing transportation to students who live within two miles of their campuses, but who might be along what's considered a hazardous walking route. And I think that's important to note. You know, could continue talking for a long time, but something that's way down on the list, but I really want to call out is the renovations to the two floors of the Enterprise Center. This is something that you might look at and say, well, that's not necessarily student-focused. But it absolutely is because the people who are going to be moving into those buildings, into those floors are administrators who, by and large, serve students. They're not sitting at their desk every day. If you know the administrators in this district, they're out and about, they're in the field. But they do need workspace. And right now, those workspaces are scattered out among many different buildings across Arlington. And it's really inefficient and it's costing us money. And a net result of this will be that we will have efficiencies from consolidating those different, those different departments into one centralized location. And at the same time, being able to sell off some of those properties and realize a gain from those and really a net savings on that. So from really top to bottom, the needs are justified objectively. There will be no increase in the tax rate. And so, I mean, I think this is such a big win for the district. And I look forward to getting out there and making the case to the voters if my colleagues are to vote in favor of this package. And I think it, the package speaks for itself.
Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Powell, thank you for all the work. We know you and your staff have put in work over the last, as we started having the discussion of this coming up a year ago or so, and we started working on this, knowing that this would occur. Bonds are, bonds are no easy thing to get prepared for. They're no easy thing to pass, and they're no easy thing to implement. It takes a lot of work, and I appreciate the staff. Let me thank our committee, our citizens committee. We, you know, this, this board, in 1999, a bond was passed. The board previous us, and I came on in '08, waited and didn't pass a bond for 10 years. And we got behind. We did, plain and simple. In 1999, there was a bond passed. In 2009, we passed a bond, I think it was about $197 million. And it was truly a bond, and you've got to remember, we were in a recession at that moment. But we had needs of buildings that had to be repaired. Or we took major risk as a district. And so with a lot of risk, we put out a $197 million bond package. It was very, you know, talk about hard voting on this, it was hard voting on that when everyone is financially in really tough times. And it was, it was, I think it was, we literally named it Bond for Basics because it was nothing but basics that we worked on and focused on. And then as we kept going, we started really developing strategic plans and what we're doing and where we were taking this district. And part of those items included facilities that had to be done. And the 2014 bond had some marquee items, some items that I would tell you are the biggest game changer this district may have ever seen in that Career Tech Center. There's a lot of other nice things in there. There's a lot of awesome items. There's some rebuilds, our fine arts centers would be amazing, the Ag centers, amazing, a lot of repairs to buildings. But you get a game changer where we're sending 59% of all of our high school juniors and seniors through there. And that's putting students first and all the discussion of not everyone has to, don't shun vocational education. As someone who took vocational education while I was here in high school and learned more vocational ever, vocational education than learned in the other class, I've learned not to say which class I didn't learn the most in. Am I getting in trouble for that one? This bond comes back and there's nothing glamorous in this bond, plain and simple. You look at it, you've got $372 million in conditions. Conditions are not, yeah, they're kind of boring in all essence. And then you start looking at some of the other pieces. And I won't go through them all, because Mr. Chappa did a good job talking to this. But about a year and a half ago, I was in Eastern Hills High School over in Fort Worth. And our colleagues to the west of us have done a lot, they've passed a bond. And that school's being, I think, repaired or replaced, they're doing a lot. But I was walking through that school and I had a meeting over there for something else. And I said, I will never walk through a school like that in Arlington, I say. It was what you like see in movies of really rough schools, lights out. And I know they're doing a lot and they'd passed a bond to repair that. But then you go and visit Carter Junior High, it's nowhere near that level, but we're close. And I was a little embarrassed. And it's needed. And I have to encourage, some of my colleagues were like, go see Carter. I said, okay. And I did, and we're at the point. And then, not to mention Carter's falling into Rush Creek, on a whole different story from where it comes in. And then it's been a while since I've been to Berry. We do the walk there every year. And you see that, and it's been a couple of years since I've been to Thornton, but I'll never remember walking to Thornton. These are, these are repairs that have to be made. These are things that have to be done and processed through. You've then got things like pre-K. And you've got something that I always say, private schools don't get around the word "choice." We've been in a district of choice since it's been around. We allow people to choose which schools, we offer more programs of where they can choose and what they're doing, and access to all students. I didn't think I'd, I was like, there's no way I'm going to get to this level of what we're going to approve and what we're going to do. But then as we started thinking, you know, our cultural tenants, and we have six of them, the first two talk about, the first one talks about promote risk-taking. This is a risk, plain and simple, no ifs, ands, or buts about that is what it is. But then the second one talks about putting students first. That's what we're doing in this one. And I appreciate what we're doing, and the last one's to get better every day. This makes the district better from what we're challenging, what we're doing. I appreciate bringing this back in, the exact same number that an entire citizen's spent a long time working on. And I can't thank them enough for all their work on that, but bringing it back in at the exact same number from where we came. Because you always get careful about what's getting added, what's getting deleted. And we made some adjustments, but we came back in with that same one. At this time, I am fully ready, whenever anyone makes a motion, to place his hands in the voters because that's what we do with bond elections, is place them in the hands of voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Mays. I echo the sentiments of Mr. Hogg, Mr. Chappa, absolutely. Just one more thing to point out to this body. The, this is already, it is a big number. But it is between two and three, closer to $300 million less than where it started. And I don't think we have really discussed that much. When the committee began their work, this was near $1.3 billion. And we're all like, oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh. And I just think that's an important point to remind all of us about. 2014 bond was a very similar situation where there was $200, $250 million worth of deferrals that were taken out of that 663 package. So here we are basically at the same point of 250, maybe more, towards $300 million already taken out and deferred. So I really do appreciate the work of Mr. Horn, your staff, Ms. Powell, and all of the professionals that have taken the time to assess what those tiers are, what the condition indexes are, indices are. indices are. It's no easy task when we are dealing with a ginormous amount of facilities. So I'm prepared to support the recommendation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Walton, before I press your button, one thing I just want to say is, you know, we've looked at the number, but I would challenge anyone to spend a few days at the district. Go visit our CTC center during a school day. Look at the number of buses that we have driving all around the city. Take a chance to go to an elementary school and see the number of kids walking down the halls, eating in the cafeterias. So those dollars represent our students and the success that we see them having. 2014 bond, visit our website and read the amazing outcomes that have come from the things that came out of that bond. So I just wanted to add that in. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Mays. I've seen a lot of bonds, you know, go through this district since 1971 when I came, and each one got bigger. You know, I guess we've had inflation over that many, many years, and it's, you know, I still see things in 1970 prices, you know? I mean, I'm my father all over again, it's scary, you know? So of all the people on this board, I should be the most worried about this number, but I'm not. I'm ready to shoot for the moon. We've got a community that is strong and ready to support us. I've talked to so many people who are almost as excited about this as I am out there. We've got staff members that are, can see what this is going to do for kids and the good it's going to do, and they're all ready to get out there and work to help the word get out about what is this very large bond all about. So I think we're ready. I think we've done a great job. We've had two wonderful leaders down here, ladies, and a wonderful needs, capital needs committee that went over and over and everything, and our staff, my gosh, you know, we are so blessed to have you. It's like, everything's coming together, gang, you know? It's going to work. So I'm ready in order to fund the priorities that the capital needs committee has recommended for 2020, 2025, as reflected by our discussion and much more. I would like to move to direct the administration to prepare for the board all necessary and appropriate documents, motions, resolutions, and or notices to call for a $966 million bond election on November the 5th, 2019.
Okay. So a motion by Ms. Walton, do I hear a second?
Second.
Dr. Reich? Motion made by Ms. Walton, second by Dr. Reich. Are there any other questions? If not, let's vote. Ananmas passed. Thank you very much. I would like to just say one more thing. Thank you to my colleagues who have made sure to do the deep dive, and I'm off of pain medication, so I can say thank you now for doing, for doing your due diligence, for raising the questions that needed to be asked. Thank you for reviewing the information to understand exactly what was made up. Thank you very much for being able to have community members to put together recommendations to provide. Thank the district for opening up our high schools to make sure all of the information was put out from our community, have them an opportunity for our stakeholders to make comments, thoughts. And I think instead of, I really liked the term that you used, what did you say about the bond, the previous bond?
Bond for Basics.
What did they call it?
Bond for Basics.
Bond for Basics. Well, I like to call these our bonds, because that's what it is. It's the community, it's our students. So I just would really challenge anyone who has questions over the next few months, I'm sure they're going to be hearing a lot if we move forward and call for this bond in August 19th, is that correct? I challenge to ask the questions, if you have questions. I don't think that there's one person up here, any people sitting over here, that would not be very happy to explain to you exactly what every dollar means in this bond package for our students here in Arlington, I S D. And continue, Ms. Foster, to go to our website and see all of the interesting information, to see the breakdown. Once again, I'm just, I'm very happy. And y'all were talking about conditions, and you're right, maybe they don't seem glamorous until you've said, honey, that freon's too expensive, the air's still cool enough, and that one night comes where there's no more cool air coming out. And let me tell you, on the two stories, sitting on the second, it was very, very hot. So conditions are very glamorous to me because that means I get to stay cool. So that is right. That's when they really do make a difference. So once again, thank you to my colleagues. I'm sure that the appreciation truly will come back from our students who will be impacted and have opportunities to continue for success and be proud of where they're spending most of their hours of their day. So, okay, so next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no lights. So tonight, we will be considering the items listed on your agenda under consent items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you. I'll ask Ms. Powell to come back to the podium and tell us about our consent items.
God, I thought we were done. So, all right. It was President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. We have our first report of donations for the new year. Donations presented for your consideration this evening totaled $33,415, and so that is also our year-to-date total. We also have seven bids on the agenda, and in all cases, the corporation recommends the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, move for approval.
Mr. Chappa?
I moved a second, and I'd also ask that my vote be recorded as an abstention with respect to employ Kimberly Inga Breton, a first-grade teacher at Crow Elementary.
Okay, so we have a motion by Hogg, by Mr. Hogg, and a second by Mr. Chappa. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chappa?
Yes, Mr. Chappa, can you repeat your abstention? If you press your button, I'll turn you on.
Yeah, I'd like to record my, the abstention with respect to Kimberly Inga Breton. She's listed as a first-grade teacher at Crow Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Okay, once again, no questions. Let's vote. Okay, vote passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Ms. Benjamin, we may have to go back through the minutes and see how there ever been three abstentions from one board member in a meeting. This is amazing. Okay, so we now move to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, are there any cards? Okay, there are no cards, so we will continue on in our agenda. We now move to our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and just a brief amount of information. First, I'd like to welcome back our teachers. Today was their day back, and you see how some of them spent their day up on the screen, and just welcome them back to an exciting 2019, 2020 school year. Our employees have been working throughout the summer, getting training, and we've heard a lot of that. I'd like to highlight some. Active learning cycle training has continued as we get more campuses into that cohort. Holtsworth Cohort 2 trained this summer, and they focused on personal leadership and team dynamics. Our pre-K teachers, and you see them on the upper left-hand side, had a wonderful early childhood conference that included sessions specifically designed for Arlington, and they were an excited group of pre-K teachers. Principals, assistant principals, deans, and all leaders in the district went through Instructional Leadership Academy this week with the focus of a shared vision and also our literacy initiative. I want to thank all our staff and all our teachers and staff for their continued growth mindset and continuous improvement. It really makes a difference for our students. We also had our State of the District Wednesday, and I want to thank the Arlington Chamber for organizing this event and all our communication staff and all our staff that contributed to that, most especially our students that were, they joined us even though they're on summer break, they came in for lunch, I guess they'll come in for lunch, so I want to thank them. I also want to remind everyone that Saturday is our fifth annual AISD back-to-school kickoff. There's still time to register to volunteer and also to donate, and you can consider being part of this great event, and I look forward to seeing many students at that back-to-school event and their parents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have any trustees with reports? Mr. Chappa?
Thank you, President Mays. Just real quickly, and because they're here as well, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Hill and Mr. Kine, not only for the work that they've done on the Capital Needs Steering Committee and co-chairing that and shepherding it through the last going-on eight months now of that, that project, but at the same time, each of them respectively were working hard at their own campuses with their local PTAs, and today it was announced that Corey and Duff PTAs earned the National PTA Schools of Excellence Award, and they are the only two schools in the district to do so. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Okay, so I believe we will be adjourning this meeting before 10 o'clock, so it is now 9:52, and this meeting is adjourned.